So, we're going to call this meeting a Village Planning Commission to Order. Brian, if you could have a roll call, please.
Certainly, Jason Holshausen.
Here.
Amanda Pullin.
Here.
Mike Kramer.
Here.
Maria Dalkey.
Here.
Sorry, I'm not buzzing.
Uh, Jennifer Hagen. Absence, sorry, I was waiting for that. And Troy Newman.
Here.
All right, we have an agenda. If anyone has comments, things they want to add to the agenda this evening? No?
Uh huh.
All right. We'll entertain a motion for our agenda.
And will be a fully agenda committee? For?
Any discussion before we vote on our agenda? All right, we have a motion with support to approve our agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have minutes from May 4th and June 28th. I, uh, Troy is missing from June 28th.
I saw him here, so.
If he was there, if he was there. Uh, anyone else have?
Questions?
Yep.
Or Kramer? On the May 4th meeting? Um, that was the meeting that I noted at the beginning that I kept married my maiden name. But throughout this document, we're using both names. But just, I guess for this one, can we just use Christina's? Uh, future minutes can have both names? Kind of mixed, sometimes it's Christina, sometimes it's.
So four is right or wrong? May 4th is correct or not correct?
Well, it's, my last name is used both ways.
Okay.
And, I don't know, just to be consistent, do you want to?
Whatever you want it to be.
It's your last, it's your name.
Yeah, whatever, whatever you want it to be is basically what we'll do, so.
Well, I haven't legally changed it yet, so it's okay to use Christina's. Um, but I know the brain's starting to, you know, use Dalkey more and more, which is okay, because I don't know, it's gonna be changed legally.
So you just tell us what it should be, and then we'll make the changes.
The fourth to be Christina's, and the 28th is got that one.
Yeah, for the minute, for the minutes before it, just kind of Christina's.
Okay.
The signature also, um.
Okay.
Should be Christina's. All right, and then, and the 28th, for the signature, my name is spelled wrong. D A H.
Okay.
I think you changed that.
I've got a D U here. Yeah, okay. We'll make sure. Okay, got it.
All right. Anything else to do?
No.
All right. So we have corrected minutes before us for May 4th and June 28th. Who's making that motion?
Wait, the, the May fours are okay, aren't they?
Uh, Troy, Troy's missing as of.
No, May fours. The May fours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The May fours, I think, are okay, right? Or are they not okay?
Just, uh, Maria's last name.
Okay, got you, all right. We're good.
Okay.
It's been a long day, it looks better tomorrow when we review this again.
It does.
But we'll, we'll, we'll give minutes as correction. For May 8th, or May 4th and June 28th. Support?
All right, we have a motion to approve our corrected notes of May 4th and June 28th. One last chance for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh, we have a public comment opportunity this evening, right now, for any, uh, comments for matters that are not on our agenda this evening.
Actually, Jason, I think we could probably just say yes.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah. Anyone have comments for anything this evening? Before we move on? No, all right. We are moving on to unfinished business, site plan 2019-04, the Carnival Drive entrance. Gentlemen?
What's protocol up there in my chair there?
Come up to the volume.
All right.
Then you're on speaker.
So, I think for over a year now, we've been talking about better ways to handle the truck traffic, particularly the steel coil truck deliveries and the distribution of water heaters on Bradford White. Trying to figure out a way to reduce the amount of traffic on Grand Avenue Street, and we've done a pretty good job about that, so now they're trying to reduce the amount of times that a truck comes into the campus, but that trailer needs to be overrun crane road, overall, the steel drive apartment, right? So that's why that whole project started, trying to figure out a way to get the guard shack or the instructions up near crane road instead of inside the middle of campus. Worked on that for a long time, and then the priority kind of shifted to changing steel receiving and employee entrance to make it fit the needs at the time. So for the last year, that's where really all the energy's been at. In Carnival, guard shack, entrance renovations kind of took a backseat. So that's why we're asking for the extension of the amount. We need a little bit more time to figure out just how that's gonna go.
We may have questions?
Okay.
But, Brian, you have your report?
Um, pretty straightforward, site plan, or excuse me, law laws for the extension, approved in the upper in writing, um, which they had ones, and they need to reevaluate, um, the site plan. Recall, this was approved in 2019, uh, and then amended last year, and that was a major amendment, thus given the site plan 2019-04 amendment. Now we're looking for an extension. I do want to know if you motion to extend the date of approval for one year, 2022, but if major changes are to occur, you would have to come back for site plan. Makes sense?
It does.
So you have the, in the book in the back, the approval letter and then the latest site plan, that was approved. And so if they reevaluate, go back with a separate plan, whether there's a thing, you know, you can go forward with the necessary approvals that are needed for building, some erosion, and there's also the health department, as you can see, that were in that. We recommend issues to approve for.
Does anyone have questions for Bradford White, for staff?
I have a question. Um, evaluating the function, does that mean administrative function or logistics or what?
It's more logistics. Every trailer that enters the campus and leaves the campus needs to be inspected. So they come all the way into the campus and the guard shacks over there on the west side of the distribution building. And what happens is that trucks are starting to stack up, waiting for the inspections to occur, which is one of the, one of the reasons for redevelopment, to give the trailers more space to be able to wait for their turn. So it's logistics.
Looked like there was a way for them to stack up on the way out, right?
So on the way out, drivers, after they had their inspection, then they need to do the regular. Usually it takes 15 minutes or so, so yes, there's, there's been stacking up going involved.
So the, uh, the site plan that we have in our packet tonight is the, as Brian said, the latest approved. Nothing's changed since the last amendment. I don't see a problem with extending it. It's gonna turn into a market eventually if something doesn't happen. Any other questions, comments?
Just a comment before I make my. I appreciate the diligence you put into this. I mean, there's a lot of moving parts over there, and that you continue to try and find the best fit while taking into community consideration is not short phenomenal for us. So with that being said, I'd be having to make motion to extend this.
Thank you. I love that a little formal.
Oh. All right, hold on, hold on.
So the comp, compliment could go down on the record too?
Yes. I wanted to make sure that's been honored. I will recommend with the company that we extend the date of approval for site plan 2019-04 for a period of one, one calendar year to July 6th, 2022. Major changes occur, the site plan will need to come back for the planning commission.
Support?
We have a motion to extend the site plan 2019-04 to July 6th, 22, with support. One last chance for discussion.
And I, I'll make another comment. We've had a lot of public meetings, uh, with general concern. We had, before it was Carnival Drive entrance and the storage building, we've had, how's it's gonna look? And I've had a handful of people that complained, come back and tell me what an improvement the building is in the facade and all the work you've done. So, I mean, it's a long process, we take a lot of crap from the public before it happens, but what you've done with the facility is made it a whole lot easier to take that crap up front, so I just wanted to reiterate why I'm complimenting you, because you've done a nice job. I mean, there's always gonna be kinks, there's always gonna be people complaining, but from where we started to where we are now, it's been a night and day difference.
So I've worked with a number of different general managers of that plant, and the one common denominator is everyone of the community. And they are sincerely conservative about their neighbors and making, you know, making it all work, making, right, their business work within a residential community, so. It's very, it's very, very high priority.
All right, move on to this motion, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Here it is. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Actually, Jason, did you want to have a comment just real quick?
Oh, um, we have at least one new member here, some newer members. Just wondering if we could get a, a general update of things happening Bradford White, if you would.
Sure. So, I think about a year and a half ago, they decided that they needed to expand their steel receiving, be able to unload coils and process that raw material faster to keep up with the demand, because they added different lines or additional types of water heaters that they produce. And at the time, it was going to be two times as large as what the final product is gonna be, although it's designed to be expanded in the future. So, the steel receiving building that's, that's currently, that's literally starting right now is phase one, whether it will be phase two and three, I can't answer. Alls I can say is that it is designed to be extended in the future. And if that happens, then the way the trucks process their unloading would change. You know, today, they're basically gonna come through the courtyard and go, well, go through the building the same way they do today, the only difference is that building will, will be one day wider. And they're adding another piece of machinery that processes.
The Lafayette Street?
The Lafayette Street, at this stage in the game, there's no real, there's no firm committed change there. They are, they are determined to close it off permanently, and it will be currently used, but the next year it'll be used for construction laydown area. And then they kind of keep that in reserve in case they need additional parking, that would be the first place they would add. And then the employee entrance project, also, the footprint of it stayed the same, however, the height reduced, and the interior walls and the layout of the, of the facility inside changed. It's still a cafeteria, break area, and it's still where human resources is gonna be located. But for the most part, it will look the same from the outside, in other words, it'll follow the same decor, the metal siding's all the same, the natural, um, I would be, the landscaping will be expanded, and as far as the appearance goes, I don't think you'll really notice. And both those projects are getting started right now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I got one more question, doesn't necessarily relate to you, Dave, we want you to sit down. How much of Lafayette Street has to maintain existence for them to keep their physical address?
Well, the office said that they were allowed to keep it regardless.
I did talk with the postmaster about that, and he thought that we could work something out.
Okay. Because, because abandoning a street is one thing, but you don't think about the ramifications of how many times you have 200 Lafayette printed on material in that building? So, I was just curious.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I think we did talk to the postmaster, and that's what everything coincides on.
He said that, you know, that would be a discussion we'd have to take place and try and figure out what makes most sense for both parties, but he thought that that would not be a big hurdle that we couldn't get through.
I mean, I'm fine with just leaving a curb cut and a sign sitting there, and each street can go away. I just didn't know, like legally or logistically, what has to happen to, to keep that.
That's most of us.
Yeah.
All right, we are going to move on to our new business this evening. Ordinance number 2119, the marijuana business, special land uses in the C2, I1, and I2 districts. Brian?
All right, well, thanks to everyone who was in attendance last Monday at the high school, um, for our public hearing, which we held, we didn't make a decision, we said we would make a decision tonight. Um, as everyone knows, we have 17 in the audience, four commentators, uh, the one I was able to record to spoke out against it, one for it, one raised concerns about, you know, how we regulate marijuana business in comparison to other businesses. Um, I would like to point out, at least from what I saw in the minutes, people that were against it were not well-respected, so. Again, the whole reason why we came to this was a direction from council based on what happened in 2018. So we gave this ordinance a name, now it's ordinance number 2119, and this is the zoning ordinance only, okay? Again, this will be moved towards the village council, the village council will act on what is the regulatory ordinance, which regulates, um, the process, the number of licenses, the standards, things like that, uh, at the August 3rd, to be in holding, right? So, we've included in the packet as well as that we have letters, uh, from 10B there, we also had some few emails that we really hopefully had time to look at that. I know it's, sometimes it's not an easy situation to, um, go through and have a premeditated idea of, this is what we want, this is exactly what we have, and we have public comment, you hear some component reasons one way or the other. So what tonight is, is that there's anything in this zoning ordinance that we would like to see change, or if you feel it's adequate, we recommend it to move it on for approval to village council, um, to discuss, because we're talking mainly about which district the licenses are allowed in, what distance requirements are, what site plan, special land use. Everyone understand which districts we're talking about? C2, I would commercial, I1, light industrial, I2, heading. Not downtown, I mean, obviously, there are requirements, distance requirements, possibly feet, uh, that's what the Michigan Regulation and Taxation Marijuana Act says we can go up to as a measure, and we kind of identified that as a definition. Also, it, it states that this is, which would amend our table of contents, and then also, remove section 78, there's 40 hours says that we don't block anything of this, so it was a pretty comprehensive, um, view from the, the attorney, so. I mean, if there's, everyone's pretty satisfied with how this works, you know, the motion would be in order tonight, but we can certainly discuss, and heard, certainly what we heard at the meeting, and we're not involved. And all I really got, we've looked at this many, eight times.
Yes, we have. So, um, we were all there on Monday, uh, we've gotten additional written comments, which one of them was, I believe she was there, and it was just her.
It was her written comment.
Yeah, it was her comments that she sent us in written form. Does anybody have anything that the zoning ordinance, do you think, after public comments, after talking about this for over a year? Any changes do we think need to be made?
I just have one, I don't know, annotation, it's not necessarily a change that needs to be made, but maybe a clarification in the package, I mean, section 78-566, let's count to item O, be page five in the package. Those marijuana businesses must have a written plan in place addressing loitering and sales to minors. That kind of implies that loitering and sales is allowed? So maybe we should change the wording to say regarding restrictions to loitering and sales to minors?
So just strike out addressing and put restricting.
We're written code on place.
I assume that's copied based from state document. Didn't necessarily need to be in our regulation. Like, a lot of this is copied and pasted from.
All right.
Well, I think the, the addressing would say, no, we're not doing that, but you want explicit.
Right, but it's not allowed.
Marijuana, marijuana businesses must have a written plan in place addressing how loitering and sales minors will be included.
I find you.
Restrictive for.
Or, my suggestion would be, um, heroin businesses must have written plan in place addressing restrictions to loitering and sales to minors.
General works for you guys, huh?
And I think that'll work.
Yeah, they, they sell to minors, that's when they can get their license revoked and their special.
State, well, not to mention the state, so.
But is that?
Requirement that, that they have to have something posted about it.
So from planning commission, you need to have it posted?
Well, it needs to be in their.
In their, their. Specialized use.
Yes, that would be a thing, so like the way we issue licenses, have standard conditions, you know how we talk about that? It'd be really long, so, it would be in the.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so just inserting the word restricting between addressing and loitering.
And then, um, again, talking about concerns to, um, businesses and that's raised in hearing, and the restrictions and the fees and penalties that are applied to marijuana business, and that applied to other businesses that require state licensing. Kind of thought about that, and, and sort of makes sense, but also marijuana businesses are not federally legal. So I think maybe that's why there is that stance. And if we're gonna be reviewing it every two years, maybe in two years when it is legal federally, we can whip some of those restrictions and be, that's something that, you know, maybe we can consider in the future. That to, because you don't want to discriminate against.
I struggle.
The nature of this.
I struggled with that too, because that one, that was the one comment that really shook my confidence in my city. But, the more I thought about it, you know, we're not regulating every business, we're regulating controlled substance businesses. While it's not federally legal, if legal in the state has a controlled substance, it's the same way we regulate a liquor license, which is a controlled substance, it's the same way we regulate a pharmacy as controlled substance. So, I, I get where he was coming from, where it was kind of an overreach, but it is if it's a regular business. But we're applying the same standards that the state's requiring to a controlled substance business.
Yeah, we're, we're within state guidelines, it's not a grocery store or.
Gas station.
Yep. Please don't do that. He suffered enough.
He brought it up during.
I, I don't have, I don't have a problem with the, the amendments, the zoning ordinance, the new zoning ordinance at all. Yeah, the, the restrictions that we have, I think are reasonable, they're within state guidelines, they're, yeah, I think they're fine.
Jason, I just had one other point was, page four, there'd be subsection A of 78-566, about 1,000 feet, in where marijuana business should be located within 1,000 feet of any lot which is located, a church, center of worship, religious institution, republic or private elementary school, or licensed medical facility, it should be an existing church.
Yep.
So let's just say a marijuana business comes in, and then for some reason, within 1,000 feet, there could be a church that comes in, it's only, what, church or school?
Would we then deny the church that zoning because they are within 1,000 feet because the business was there first?
I think that they invested their right with lives and the licensing. Does that make sense?
It, it does, but I don't know how that, I mean.
I, I, yeah, I don't know how that.
Well, there'd be, there'd be, look at the standards for special land use for a church, if there's nothing in there, or whatever, whatever it may be. I want to make sure that we have an existing, because that, because you don't want to sit there and say, oh, wait, this came in and we can't renew your license.
Right, we had that in our draft.
We did, but the attorney, again, he looked closer. That was the one thing I noticed. It exists.
Yeah, any lot in which is located and existing.
Yeah, and so the way I would describe it is, at the time of application, was existing.
Yeah, striking the A and adding am existing. All right.
Typically, those uses are separate by zone anyway, which you're gonna have sometimes.
You've got areas where they're close enough.
Well, you've got areas where it's close enough, and I remember there could be a possibility for a reason, you know, into a district that could be property that could be resolved into C2 or I1.
Okay. Anything else? You two? Yeah, I, I'm okay with this. Uh, we've got two minor changes. I think, I think it's appropriate to make a recommendation one way or another to come out this evening.
I'll make that motion, but I want to speak to the first, the comments and the written letters that we received. None of us take this lightly, I mean, there's a lot riding on this, and we don't want to do a problem the first time. Comments that, you know, this is gonna put more drugs in our community, that, they clearly didn't grow up here, if they're making that comment, because they were here when I was in schools, they're here now. It's not like this is new, it's been around. I mean, my logic, whether it's right or it's wrong, if we allow, you know, certified clean products in the community, then that's the product that's gonna wind up in our kids' hands. And while I still don't condone it, I feel a lot better sleeping at night knowing that at least the stuff they're getting isn't grown in a farm next to fertilizer or something else that could possibly kill them. I mean, just, just not everybody's a herbologist, or, or horticulturist, or whatever they are that grow, I mean, I'm not 100% on the term, but you can't trust what's out there. And, at least this way, what's seeping through the cracks is, A, trapped seed to sale, and B, we know it's certified because it's being sold at a retail establishment that wants to keep its license. I don't really care about what money might come into the community, it's not what it's about. To me, I mean, getting this here is meeting a need for the people that need it medically, and if we have to bring retail in, then so be it. I mean, people shouldn't have to suffer, and this is a viable source of medical treatment, that's not, you know, a pile of chemicals that's something pushed through. So, I mean, I get it, as a parent, I don't want my kids getting this stuff, if they do, then I'm gonna have to talk them up, but that's my responsibility as a parent, that's not a business's responsibility, to make sure that I parent my kids. That's gonna piss the people off, so be it, but that's, that's how I look at it, you are responsible for your children, not these businesses. We're putting in every restriction that we can, um, while still allowing them to have a viable business and make a profit, because that's what everyone comes here to do. And we're restricting it enough to where we're not gonna flood the market like other communities have seen. I feel like we made the right decision as a community to wait it out, to put a lot of effort into going down this path, and to making sure we have. and to making sure we have a solid ordinance before we started. And I feel like this is the culmination of those efforts. And I hope that it's the right decision. And if it's not, we'll review it, and we'll try and fix it, because we don't want to leave a mess for our kids. But I feel like we've done our diligence to make this as best we can. So with that being said, I will make the recommendation to move this to full council for a decision, and approve it at planning commission.
Support.
We have a motion to recommend an approval of ordinance 2119 to village council with support. Any commissioner have comments, discussion before we vote? Run out, I'm looking at a roll call, please.
Mike Kramer.
Aye.
Maria Dolke.
Aye.
Jennifer's not here. Troy Newman.
Aye.
Amanda Poland.
Aye.
Jason Holthausen.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We have committee business. All right, before we get to committee reports, Troy's not on any committees.
Yes. That's true. We need to get one, at least one. We have vacancies around site plan, ordinance.
I think site plan is what we talked about.
It is what we do.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, if you'd like to join Mike and I on the site plan committee. All righties.
I guess a motion would be in order, though.
All right, I move that Troy is joining the site plan committee.
As the other member of that.
Maybe I'll second it.
All those members say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, Troy's on the committee. All right, committee reports, Frank.
Well, we, that is important. We've been talking about, oh, a lot of things. We talked at length about the lighting that's been moved. City government requests a change in the lighting ordinance. But the RVs still, the creation of a new zoning district, transitional mixed-use district for the future land use plan, the transitional industrial district. Well, that really kind of get down, and I confirm with Nathan, it will be in attendance at our next meeting. Okay. And Mike, at our next meeting, which is Wednesday, the 24th. Moving along, then, it's on the agenda, different types of housing options in the ordinance, by right of life, special land use, and then solar. Solar, utility solar for residential is accessory use, similar to rental township. That's kind of what we're working on, site plan committee, been relatively quiet. You know, and then joint planning, whoever's on that.
No, I'm just, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
I talked to Catherine, and it looks like it's policy.
All right, are you on your report?
Now we're going to my report. I was talking about, and again, we still, it says in my report, we're down one number. We lost one. So, we're going to have to probably join up as a committee, probably be the ordinance committee. So, have, have gotten some interest on that. So this is a staff report that we had from both May and June, so it's pretty busy. Phase seven of Mr. Ridge, that's all permitted out. It's 23 lots. Tonight, we just moved a motion to phase eight to approve some of the final steps for the final plat for Mr. Ridge, lady contractor Angie Easeman, district and all that. We talked a little bit, and I actually talked quite a bit about project 112 East Main. They have, they have a closing date on the property. People have a new development period in May. We're kind of weighing over, council's weighing over the options right now. Let's see how, see. Again, there's some market challenges with the developer, and we're hoping that we can come to a reasonable mutual solution on that one. RRC recertification, still chipping away at that law that does, like I said, talks about the money in the zoning ordinance for different types of housing, conducting a joint meeting, and then obviously having, having some training for outs, and other just kind of organizational things that may or may not come before planning commission, but most likely council for adoption of house. Want to say, hey, if you can make it, our next meeting with the DDA for training, no, Thursday. Thursday, talking about parking housing, how awesome zoning administration is. Uh, planning commission vacancy, no. Designing, during which, if you can get someone that runs until 2023, you can get someone in there soon. Sometimes you just can't replace people. And I forgot to mention, Jennifer did tell me at the public hearing that she would not be able to make it. So if you want to make a motion to excuse her, you could. She's a little.
Vacation.
You be somewhere. It's, I hope they will have it for her.
Mike vote, does he have any support?
Support.
All right, all those parents.
Aye.
All right, Jennifer's excused.
I have another question before we move off your report. We got, I don't know about, you know, I got a bunch of emails from, oh, I don't, station in short-term housing. Were you getting those?
Oh, short-term rental.
Short-term rental.
Short-term rental.
Which I am assuming would be the VRBOs, the Airbnb. So what's our policy on income property? Because you would have to get special land use to use your house as an income.
Yes.
Correct.
You would have to have, you'd have to regulate it for short-term, right?
So we don't currently allow it.
Not through a process through a zoning, it's going down.
But, but the, because you're using a residential parcel for commercial interests.
Well, that's what the whole debate of the state legislature.
Yeah.
Is that specifically what they're trying to do, the bill sponsors, largely it's directed from a side of the aisle, that specifically states in the zoning ordinance that a short-term rental is not a commercial use of the property. Now, this doesn't affect us like it does some other communities that are really in tune to Granite Haven, Lennotford, St. Joseph, you know, up north, other areas. I know they're looking at the township. But what this would do, would basically eliminate, I won't say basically, but it would really restrict the local government's control of how a rental property would be inspected. As opposed to being a short-term rental, it would just basically be owner occupied, where they can run it out without any inspection process, anything like that, or require a site plan review. I mean, the reason why I came for the court a few years ago was that there was a situation where there was a short-term rental, it was a neighborhood on Lake Shore, and they had confines, which you always get with some types of increased intensity activity of a property. Trash, noise, parking, all that stuff, that goes on with what you would typically apply to commercial use, right? I mean, if they're, if they're running it out short-term, what's the ramifications? Now, the argument on the other side is saying, we're, these are allowing these property rights of these owners, these homes, to use it to their advantage. The other argument would be, well, you're infringing on your property rights of your neighbors because of that lack of regulation. So right now, if I were following all those prompts from the MML and the legislation alerts that you get, I think they're still in session. I still think they're trying to do some type of compromise of the league, Michigan municipal league, on where this, where they're not against short-term, they're not completely banning. You're allowing a number of different standards. This would basically say, it's permitted by right. So the only way you could go in there would be through our nuisance. Does that make sense? Our nuisance control. So, yeah, as of right now, we don't have one. We do not have any short-term rental permits.
But if they permit this by right, you couldn't even have.
Permit, if they permit it by right, as I understand it, it would basically mean any residential property owner could do a short-term lease and say, this is not a commercial use of property, and I can use my property as I see fit.
It would eliminate local rent.
And I'm on the MML Land Use and Economic Development Committee, and strongly said, no, we do not support this, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if that was going to the planning commission or not, or just going to council.
It hasn't, because it's kind of like, we're waiting to see what the legislation is doing.
I get one day, at least.
Yeah, if you sign up with those legislation alerts from MAP or MML, whatever, you could go watch the, if you ever go watch House TV, or whatever.
Go have fun.
You can see the testimonials, and you have the other side, you know, you got other people saying, like, what about hotels? Well, those, you know, they're collecting taxes, they're paying in the business, this is a residential use of property. Not yet, not every short-term rental is gonna be a chaotic housework.
Well, no, but the concern would be is the maintenance, yep. At that point, if you're not regulating it, and someone's just Airbnb in their house, someone, they take a security deposit from someone, they damage something. Well, if they don't tell anybody, is the homeowner actually checking to make sure things fixed before they send it to the next person? And without that regulation, without inspection, you don't know. And that's, then you end up with someone in a house with a faulty GFI outlet, and they're using a hairdryer by the sink, and someone gets electrocuted, or, you know, the plumbing's messed up, and the hot boiler backwards, and someone burns themselves. Who knows? There's all sorts of things that get inspected on rentals that you're not having on someone renting out their owner-occupied house.
I, I do think, though, for now, as far as we are concerned, it's a matter of waiting for land sale.
Yeah, I usually, it's a bit erratic.
To go and invest in all that research and diligence, well, it's kind of up in the air. Now, I don't know, but again, I'm not, I can't speak to what the state is gonna do. That's what the legislature, I don't know what the executive.
Sorry, I didn't need to go that long.
No, that's a discussion I thought about talking about, like, we, it hasn't been a major issue, whether or not.
It hasn't been an issue for us in the village down, like, on Lake. It has been an issue, and they just did something there.
Yeah, and the township's looking at it by the.
Yeah.
Correctly.
Well, I ask because we've had people bring up accessory residential buildings, some of these, like, you know, what do you call them, mother-in-law suites?
ADUs, accessory.
Accessory one. And I wouldn't want to see something like that turned into a rental.
That's a slippery slope, a change in the state statute.
All right, we have a code of conduct report from Robert. Questions, comments?
I would expect him to see my head or something, but I'm.
I need to say, you're on, you're on June.
Okay.
All right, so that brings us to our second public comment section this evening. Anyone have anything they'd like to say?
You guys raised a question. Again, if you're talking about regulating short-term rentals, what are you doing with long-term rentals? Are they registering those? Are you inspecting them? I live next to a house that's been running out for six years. Just a question.
Aye.
Thanks, Frank.
Nope.
Oh. Hey, ordinance committee.
No, because we're in an area of less than 10,000, we're not required to do.
Facility ordinance, it's a process, it's coordinated with the county.
There is the fuzzy line, if somebody wants to rent out a room in their home and collect rent, you know, as a living tenant with the homeowner.
I don't know the answer, no.
I, I think I know what you're talking about. I don't really see that as income. I don't think that's profit. I think that's just pay. That's a living arrangement, not a rental, if you're sheer in counting spaces.
Yeah, I didn't know that one.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Commissioner's comment is aye. Troy?
I don't know.
Troy is good. Amanda?
I'm good.
Michael?
Oh, I just spoke about, I'm good.
Maria?
Before you leave this evening, commissioners, there is a thank you card for TK Schools. Take a look, sign, please.
Thanks for remembering that.
Yep. Otherwise, Rema said, if you want to help out at Fair, you're welcome to help out council at Fair. Other than that, I am good this evening as well.
I'm good.
I'll do bar.
A motion to adjourn with support. All those in there say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? We are adjourned this evening.